I'd like to call the meeting for the Town of Atherton City Council, Atherton Channel Drive District, December 19th, 2012, meeting to order at seven o'clock. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the vote called, please?
Councilmember Carlson?
You're here.
Councilmember Dobbie?
Here.
Councilmember Rehka?
Excused.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Present.
Mayor Whitmer.
He's excused, he's at work overseas. Poor guy who thinks he's in Paris. So, with our regular agenda, items number two and three, I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk to adopt the resolution declaring the results of our election that was held on November 6th, 2012, to fill two full-term council seats. Teresa?
Thank you. You have my written report. I'm going to read the record of votes cast. For Denise Coverman is 1,087, for Greg Conlin is 1,340, for Carrie Weist 1,553, for Elizabeth Lewis 2,270. That's all I have to report.
Madam Chair, I move the adoption of the resolution declaring the results of the general election held on November 6th, 2012, electing Elizabeth Lewis and Carrie Weist to the Atherton City Council for full four-year terms.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any opposed? Any discussion? Any public discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next, we have the adoption of the resolution declaring the results of the general election held on November 6th for measures F, L, and M. City clerk?
Thank you. You have my written report. The record of votes cast are as follows. Measure F tailed with 2,651 noes. Measure L passed with 2,739 yes votes. Measure M passed with 2,901 yes votes.
Madam Chair, I move the adoption of the resolution declaring the results of measures F, L, and M voted on in the general election held on November 19th, 2012.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second?
Twenty-two.
That was a good year, too. So, do we have any discussion? Any public comments? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposed. Motion carried. So, next on the agenda are the presentations. And we're going to do the oath of office. So, Carrie, would you step forward and take the oath of office, please? I need to. Shall we do it in a minute, sir?
Yeah, please. We're going to do it in a minute. I'll raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye, Elizabeth Lewis.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and of the State of California
and of the State of California
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
that I bear true faith and allegiance
that I bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and of the State of California
and of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
that I will well and faithfully discharge
that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter
the duties upon which I am about to enter. Madam Wilson?
Thank you.
So, our next presentation is a message from the outgoing mayor, and as I said, he's overseas, and so his wife, Mary Beth Whitmer, is going to do the presentation. Thank you, Mary Beth.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and the community. Bill has asked me to present his outgoing message as his work schedule could not accommodate this meeting. He says, "To all our members, all the members of our great community, I want to take this opportunity to thank you again for the support you gave me back in 2010 during my campaign. It has been and continues to be my honor to serve you. To my fellow council members, thank you for the honor of serving as mayor over this last year. I am sorry that I cannot be here tonight to personally address you and help with the transition to the new council. Nonetheless, I would like to take a few minutes to reflect back on what we have achieved over the past 12 months and to take a look at our upcoming challenges. Despite what you may have heard or read in the media, the blogs, or even in the Athertonian, we have done a lot of great things over the past year. Not the least of these is that we are putting more emphasis on recognizing those who helped make Atherton a better place. Some of our recognition came in the form of proclamations. While just paper certificates, they are a way of saying thank you, and that is something we need to do more often. In addition, we hosted an employee appreciation luncheon in the spring and initiated the idea for a volunteer party. I hope such a party will be budgeted for in the coming year because, as I mentioned, saying thank you to those who willingly give their time and effort is important. Many of you recall, one of my campaign platforms was accountability. I feel strongly about accountability. People should say what they'll do and do what they say. I have done my best to be accountable over these last two years. While my objectives are well chronicled on my website, they were supplemented with some short-term goals which I announced during my brief incoming comments. As you may recall, I suggested just a few simple goals for the council to focus on. The key ones were to fill our interim positions and set objectives and measure performance, gain further efficiencies from our outsourcing contracts, and begin to better use technology to improve our processes, leading to greater efficiencies while improving our openness to our residents. So, how did we do? I think pretty well. At the beginning of the year, almost all city management positions were being filled by contractors. The only exception to this was the city attorney and the city clerk's office. Today, there is only one management role still being performed as an interim position, that being the Public Works Director, which is being filled by Mike Koshawagi. Over the last 12 months, the town filled three key roles. The first of these important roles was filled by the hiring of Ed Flint as our Chief of Police. Ed initially assisted the town, serving as interim chief. In June, he agreed to stay on, coming out of retirement. The town also needed a permanent finance director, and Robert Barron agreed to come on board in early October, joining us from the city of Millbrae. And finally, after considering almost 100 candidates, the town hired George Roderick, an experienced city manager, at the October council meeting. The town also hired additional police officers to retain the force at its existing level. We also hired a new office specialist and helped to grow our current city clerk, Teresa De La Santa, as the council entrusted her, who was serving as interim city manager for nine months. During the year, the town renewed the outsourcing contracts initiated the year before. While not extraordinary in itself, it is important to note that the town did gain some additional concessions and commitments from these contractors, who, based upon resident influence, are all doing an excellent job. While more work should be done to improve the cost efficiencies in these agreements, as well as in our other major subcontractor arrangements, one thing is clear: they have become more than just arms-length contract relationships, they are becoming partnerships. The last major objective was to improve the use of standard technology to boost our efficiencies and openness to the public. While this objective will never be fully reached, and understanding that we still have a long way to go, some key first steps remain. First, a search capability was implemented on the town's website, which allows anyone to find information easily and efficiently. Secondly, reliable wireless internet connections were installed in the council chambers, which allow attendees to download packets for review during the meeting. Lastly, the town procured iPad 2s and several laptop PCs to help enable our push for paperless meetings and initiate the town's movement into a paperless environment. I understand that the council will receive their devices tonight?
We hope.
Okay. We also took a lot of other important steps forward. One advancement was the recent ballot measures. For the first time since I have lived here, for an item other than a tax measure, the town was asked to weigh in on three items which would change our community. The town was energized, and the town spoke. And yes, while there were complaints about presentation of facts, one thing was certain: the residents got involved, and to me, that was a great thing, as this is what any local government wants. We also brought the safety issues on Al Camino to the attention of the state. While this issue is far from complete, the serious problems are now on the radar screen of Caltrans, and I do not intend to let this die. While there have been some meetings between the state and the town, there's a lot more work to do, and the processes used by the state will certainly not be a friend. We will need to solicit the help of our Sacramento elected officials to assist, and so this is a watch space. The town also got involved in Menlo Park's deal to bring Facebook to the area. To this end, Facebook was made to understand that Atherton would realize a traffic impact due to their relocation to the old Sun campus. As such, I negotiated a contract with them, which provided the town with an unrestricted grant of $350,000 and an additional $15,000 in traffic and bike lane consulting, plus some Facebook IT consulting and access to surplus equipment over the next two years. The budget was also a big focus for the council this year. The process, which was a three-month activity, resulted in a fully funded police budget at funding levels higher than any other year, and an overall town budget, which, considering all revenues, was over $550,000 in the black before any Facebook funding is added to the revenue totals. Additionally, the town developed a five-year capital plan, which identified key projects such as cap sealing of the roads, street improvements, including funding for pedestrian and bicycle safety, addressing the Marsh Road channel, and funding of Parks' master plan. Additionally, this year, the council began to address some long-term financial issues. Recognizing some of our off-balance-sheet issues, these being our pension liabilities and costs associated with our long-term employee healthcare obligations, the council took some bold steps to address not just our periodic expenses, but to address some future ones as well. These included establishing and placing approximately $1.5 million in pre-allocated funds into an irrevocable trust, which locks away these funds and which will help fund our anticipated long-term financial obligations for retirement health. This fund will grow as we place our annual contribution into it. The fund is now an off-balance-sheet liability of approximately $7.5 million. The council also authorized the commitment from the general fund reserves of almost $2 million of payments to the Calcur system to pay off the side fund obligations, which were established in 2003 and were to be payable in 2022. This payment saves about $321,000 in costs, which would have been paid during this fiscal year, and saves up to $489,000 over the remaining obligation. Finally, the council took steps to address the high employee overhead costs, which many of our neighboring towns have begun addressing. Specifically, the town established a second-tier benefit level for new employees, which, through its elimination of lifetime healthcare for the employee espout and changes to the pension formulas, will help to bring down, over time, the off-balance-sheet liabilities, which are in the tens of millions of dollars, as well as help manage our year-on-year budget. While these items are not pleasant nor popular, they were in our necessary steps and ones which have been well overdue. They are advances which the council needs to have the courage to continue and do what is in the best interest of the community for the long run and not focus on the short term, while showing compassion for our own employees as well. So, all in all, I believe this has been a very productive year. We have accomplished a lot despite a lot of unwarranted criticism. This council will have had to make difficult decisions to fix problems which were passed forward by earlier mayors and councils. We need to stay the course and not be distracted, as there are still formidable challenges and follow-on activities ahead. I thank you all for your help and support over these past 12 months. I thank my family for their support, even in the face of unwarranted criticism and harassment by anonymous individuals. Leadership takes courage and foresight. I believe we have shown that we have that. I am proud to have had the opportunity and honor to have had your support to serve as mayor during this period, when, as a team, we've accomplished so much. Thank you again. I look forward to continuing serving with you for the next few years.
If you speak with Bill, give him our gratitude also. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the selection of mayor and vice mayor, and it will be administered by our city clerk.
Thank you. We'll start with mayor. So, I'll take nominations in order for the position of mayor.
I nominate our vice mayor, Elizabeth Lewis, the mayor. Second? I move that nominations be closed.
There's a motion.
Second?
There's a motion in a second to nominate Elizabeth Lewis for position of mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Congratulations, Elizabeth.
Well, I think it's time. On the agenda, there's a message from the incoming mayor, and so...
Does vice mayor vote?
Oh, good. Oh, good. I get to pick. Okay.
Nominations are now in order for the position of vice mayor.
I'd like to nominate Jerry Carlson as vice mayor.
Second?
There's a motion in a second to nominate Jerry Carlson as vice mayor.
I'd like to close the nominations. Make a motion to close the nominations.
Second? First.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstanding.
Congratulations, Jerry. You can leave your chair. I'd like you to do that, please.
Plus, you're going to be drinking chocolate. I'm moving away from the chocolate.
There's a box of chocolate on the table. We can pass it around. I think there's enough. I'm going to make my remarks really brief, but I do want to thank my fellow council members for this privilege to serve the town of Atherton as mayor for the coming year. I'd like to also acknowledge the hard work that was done by our outgoing mayor, Whitmer. There was some difficult times, there were some difficult moments last year, but, as Mary Beth so accurately detailed, there were... a lot has been accomplished for the good in 2012, and I want to thank Bill for the extra effort that he exerted in that. And I'd like to also congratulate Carrie Weist. He was new to council, and I look forward to working with you, Carrie, over the next four years.
Aye.
I'm humbled and honored to be mayor at this time, and I will do my best for the town in upholding the oath that I've just taken and justifying the confidence shown me by the residents of Atherton by electing me to my second term. Atherton has many issues to address, but in light of the horrific tragedy that occurred just last week in Newtown, Connecticut, I think that all of us, council members, town staff, and residents, must keep in mind that our town's collective safety and security remain the paramount importance to us on council. That's why we're here. That's why we have a town staff. That's why we have a police force. We are fortunate to have a top-notch police force that our residents can fully depend upon. And with the 10 public and private schools within our boundaries, it is critical for us to coordinate with them in case of emergencies such as that. Like in every successful business venture, or successful project, or even a successful marriage, it always begins with a solid foundation. And I believe that the town of Atherton begins this new year with a solid foundation of our town staff. This is a result of every one of our council members' efforts over the last two years. And I didn't know that... it's really wonderful that Bill and I are in such agreement with acknowledging our town staff. But my remarks wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and introduce our team, our solid foundation of our town government, just one more time. George Roderick's new city manager, on the job 10 weeks, experienced, knowledgeable. I have the utmost confidence in his ability to manage the day-to-day operations of our town. Our city clerk goes without saying that she's the hero of 2012. Last year, she took on the job as interim city manager, as you know, not only continuing to do her job as city clerk, but elections officer and managing the ballot measures and the council elections. I can truly say, Teresa, without us, we would not have survived last year. So, I think she gets acknowledged that way. We have a new permanent finance director, Robert Barron. I think he's been on the job six weeks, but he's been here two meetings. He's getting up to speed lightning-fast. I was in a finance committee meeting with him just last week, and everyone was impressed at how prepared he was. So, new full-time, permanent team member. Our chief of police, we've already talked about that, he has the respect and the admiration of many of the residents in our town and all of us here on council. To Flint, we're so glad that you're part of our solid foundation moving forward. Thank you. Our public works director, Mike Koshawagi, has incredible dedication to our town and the safety of our people, and it's very appreciated, even though you are, what we're saying, one of our outsourced contract workers, it's like you are one of us and one of our team members. Steve Tyler, I thought I saw him. There he is. Hi, Steve. He's our superintendent of public works, and he's really our go-to guy for anything I need to do out in the field. Thank you so much, Steve, for caring so much about our town and doing such capable work. Then we have Lisa Costa-Zanders, who's been a fixture for a long time, so, forever, but she is a solid foundation team member. These individuals and many, many others who are now in place, who are a superb group of professionals who are dedicated and capable to manage the operations of our town. We, as council members, set direction and policy. We provide oversight, but we are not elected to be operational managers. I believe that the team of managers that we have provides us with a strong foundation to allow good things to happen going forward. This past year, our residents' voices were heard through social media and web technologies, connecting with each other and us in ways that had never before been possible. It is now up to our town to keep pace with that new technology, improve our website, do the wireless connections, and provide the transparency in our government that our residents expect and want. I believe this will go a long way towards improving the ability of us as council members to report to, to engage with, and to make decisions that more accurately reflect the needs and concerns of the broadest cross-section of our community than ever before. I'm looking forward to working with everyone to accomplish this. In closing, I want to reiterate, my top priority has been, in the campaign and continues to be, to develop a more collaborative council. Not that we all have to agree in lockstep, but we have to be able to put aside personal agendas and keep our focus on the big picture of what is best for our town as a whole, and work together in a collegiate, congenial, and respectful spirit. And I look forward to the coming year in doing this with all of you. Thank you so much. I've just been reminded that we have a wonderful city attorney, Bill Hahn. And our assistant attorney, Jennifer Hahn, and they've been with us for a year now, and it's really made a big difference for us. A year and a half, yes. Okay. So, moving on. Enough of that. So, this is going to be fun. We're going to get to have our chief of police, Ed Flint, introduce a new police officer.
Mayor and members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, it is indeed a pleasure of mine to introduce our newest police officer, Chris Vigil. Chris, would you stand up, please? I've got a little bio here to read on Chris. I hope that all of you get to know him in the years and months ahead. Chris was born just down the street in Santa Clara and raised in Mountain View. He went to Mountain View High School, and he played varsity football and baseball. After graduating from high school, Chris enlisted in the United States Army in March of 2003. Chris went to basic training and was trained in infantry, cavalry, scout, and assigned to the 1st Armored Division in Germany. Chris did two tours of duty in Iraq, and in 2003, Chris and his unit were in a major firefight, and Chris received a Medal of Valor, or an Army combination medal with a V for Valor, and a member of his unit was killed in that altercation. After being honorably discharged from the Army as a sergeant, Chris attended the South Bay Regional Police Academy in San Jose as a non-affiliate in pursuit of his lifelong dream of becoming a police officer. During the academy, Chris was hired by the Santa Cruz Police Department, where he served for five years. While in Santa Cruz, Chris was recognized by Mad Mothers Against Drunk Drivers and was awarded three awards in 2010, '11, and '12 for his work on DUIs. Chris served as a field training officer, a peer counselor, a motor officer, and a member of the department's prestigious honor guard. On November 15th, 2012, Chris graduated from the American Military University with an Associate Arts Degree in General Studies. Chris is continuing in his education and is going to be completing a bachelor's degree. During his free time, Chris enjoys spending time with his family, playing golf, riding motorcycles. Chris has decided to relocate back to the Bay Area so he can be closer to his family and live here in the area where he grew up. And so, he's no stranger to the peninsula and is really glad to be back here. And I'm very, very glad to have Chris on the department. With that, we're going to do an oath of office for Chris. I guess we give him it all together. Chris, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
Aye, Chris Vigil.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
The Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well
and that I will well
and faithfully
and faithfully
discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter
discharge the duties upon the...
upon which I am about to enter. Okay, well, congratulations. Thank you. A police officer's badge is the ultimate representation of his authority as a police officer. Many of us very much cherish these badges, and like myself, collect every one that we ever wore in any department, anywhere in this country. And it represents that... And it represents that solemn place that we have in the hearts and minds of the American people, and it shall never be taken for granted. And so, Chris has a significant other that he wants to pin his badge. It’s my girlfriend, Felicia. Congratulations.
So welcome, Chris, to our floor. Glad to have you. So next on the agenda is a presentation from our Arborist, Kevin Kilty, the 2012 Atherton Tree Awards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I’d like the Tree Committee, whoever’s here, to stand up and be recognized. We are always looking for more members. And Rachel, will you come up and help me with these presentations? Since you’ve done this a few times.
Rachel, while you’re getting ready, let’s put a plug in for the Tree Committee. How many members do you have? And how many members can you have on your committee?
Well, we have about five or six active members, and some that are not so active, but we’re hoping that they will become more active as they come in here.
Okay. So if anyone wants to join the Tree Committee, give Teresa De La Santa a call.
Well, I have the honor and privilege to award a certificate here to a long-term Atherton resident. She’s lived here even longer than I have. I think it was where I said 49 years, in Loiden Park. And here is a gorgeous picture of a Lyra Dendron tulip, also called a tulip tree, in its fall color. And this tree is a native of the eastern United States. And it’s also, and is, the tallest deciduous tree in the United States. Deciduous tree, one that loses its leaves. So Rosemary, will you come, please? And we’d be happy to award this certificate. No, the Constitution is that, too. And it’s a lovely tree. Some of the lower branches in this tree have been preserved. Sometimes trees are pruned up. But this looks very natural. And we congratulate you, Rosemary, for taking such good care of your tree. It’s in the front yard, and it’s a lovely tree. We have one other award. And I don’t know if the other resident is there. Robert and Monica Gentry. And they are on Redwood Way. And they are being awarded for their California Live Oak for consagrofolia. It’s a lovely tree in their backyard. And I hope that they’ll continue to take great care of it. And if they’re not here, we will mail them their award. Thank you very much.
Now, due to tree protection being such a big concern in the town over the past... Well, it has been for quite a while, but it’s gotten a little more attention this past year. The Tree Committee decided it would be a great idea, and we stole this idea from Palo Alto, was to award the contractor and the arborist on a certain site that went out of their way to protect a beautiful tree. So we got this perpetual award, which will hang in the Permit Center. And our award winners are Tapia Construction. They did an outstanding job on a project on Selby Lane. Beautiful oak tree, house built all the way around it. The oak never struggled a bit. And for that same project, we’d like to award James McClanahan, his son John here, who is a fourth-generation arborist in the town of Atherton, this award. It’s only fitting that McClanahan wins the first one, since they’ve been doing arbor culture in this town for 100 years.
That’s great. We love our trees. And it’s good to know that contractors are out there doing their best to protect them. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you so much. Okay, so next on our agenda is public comment. And this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter that’s not on the agenda tonight, but that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. So we have a number of the public here. We’re taking some photographs in the back around the government’s traffic jam.
Good evening. I’m BD Fisher, 38 Tussleus Avenue. Congratulations, Elizabeth, and Carrie, and Jerry. I’m here tonight with a little piece of good news. Measure F, the Noon Measure F Campaign, had some money left over in our account. And the committee decided to donate that money and start a 501(c)(3) fund that is called the Atherton Community Center Capital Fund to start the fundraising for a new Atherton Town Center.
That’s very generous. Thank you very much.
You’re welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Jeffrey Guveness. I’m a representative from the Office of Senator...